I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 25th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, there are not.
Thank you. Is there any input from the audience on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing done, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the approval of the September 27th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger and seconded by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next section on our agenda this evening is old business, and we've got a request by Schaefer Richardson for approval of a planned unit development, final site and building plan, and preliminary plat to construct two multifamily buildings containing 336 dwellings. And I will turn this over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a summary of the request, as you said, there's a request for a final site and building plan as part of the Preswood Place planned unit development. Since the September 27th meeting, the applicant has updated their site plan. They are no longer requesting deviations from the zoning ordinance related to height or parking. The eastern building was reduced in height by one story and from 55 and a half feet to 43 feet. And then the reduction in the number of units from 336 to 305 reduced their parking requirement. There were five stalls added to allow the site plan to meet the zoning ordinance standard for two stalls per unit. So in addition to the final site and building plan, the applicant is requesting approval of the preliminary plat that would split the parcel into two lots, each containing one of the buildings. Just a little background, you can see the site here is located in the northeast quadrant of Akron Avenue and Cona Mera Trail. 42 is kind of along the south side here with Akron running north and south. The land use designation for the site within the city's comprehensive plan is high-density residential. It was guided that in 2007 with the Preswood Place planned unit development. Additionally, the site zoning is currently R4 high-density residential. So at the September 27th meeting, the commission voted to continue the meeting to allow staff to provide a review of the traffic analysis and to allow the applicant time to update the landscape plan and submit the photometric plan. The commission may recall the landscape plan was short one tree because the landscape requirement is based on the number of units. The reduction in those units allowed the landscape plan as submitted to meet the zoning ordinance requirements. Additionally, the applicant did provide a photometric plan, which I will review coming up here. At that meeting, the commission received comments related to the following issues. There was some opposition to the requested deviations for building height and parking. There was concerns about traffic, site lighting impacts on schools and parks, the ability of police and fire to adequate the city's need, adequately meet the city's needs, as well as others that were highlighted in the meeting minutes. Just a reminder, the planning commission's authority for this request, site plan reviews and plats are quasi-judicial in nature. Therefore, the commission is being asked to consider if the request is consistent with the land use designation and conforms to the standards of the zoning ordinance, and if yes, the commission should recommend approval. If a recommendation for denial is made, it must be made based on evidence that the project does not meet those requirements and that the findings to that effect must be made by the commission. The updated site plan, the building footprint did not change with the reduction of the eastern building to provide a little orientation. The left side here would be Cona Mera Trail. The bottom of the site plan is Adeline Avenue, and then the right side is to the north. The applicant did provide five additional stalls, three of which are shown in proof of parking highlighted in the northwest corner here, as well as two surface stalls that will be constructed with the project. The two stalls per unit, including the proof of parking, meets the zoning ordinance requirements to be built with the project. The ratio is 1.7 stalls per unit unless needed, as determined by the city. As I said, the landscape plan was to be updated to provide an additional tree because there is a reduction of the number of units by 31. Only a total of 161 trees are required. The landscape plan as submitted includes 175 trees. Based on the building perimeter, which did not change, a total of 2,373 plants well exceeds the 293 foundation plantings required by the city code. The photometric plan provided by the applicant, it's hard to see here, it is able to be zoomed in in the planning commission's packet, shows that the maximum illumination at the property lines is .1 lumens. There isn't a specific standard for the R4 zoning district as it is a residential use, but there are standards for commercial districts and industrial districts that have a limit of .5 lumens at adjacent residential property lines, which are measured across the street from the building. In that case, there's zero lumens shown on the photometric study. All pole-mounted lights are 20 feet in the parking lot areas, 15 feet in the drive aisles, which is also within the zoning ordinance standards. The applicant did provide a couple of cross-sections showing the building in comparison to the two streets, the two adjacent streets. In the left side of the screen, you'll see Akron Avenue on the bottom half, kind of showing the site plan with a section to the top. And then on the right-hand side is Adeline Avenue, the bottom half showing the site plan with a section on the top. The planning commission did express and receive comments related to the parks. The Parks and Recreation staff and commission did review the proposed development and concluded that the park system would not be overburdened and continues to recommend fee in lieu of parkland dedication. There's a neighborhood park to the east of the development area that's planned as part of the Tallamore project, as well as a new school at Akron Avenue and Bon Air Path. Additionally, there's a planned underpass under County Road 42 being planned by the county that would head to the south where a future school is anticipated, south of the Dakota County Fields, as well as the larger park system within Amberfields. There was a traffic analysis. The city's engineering consultant did review the analysis. The revised study was submitted for review and is currently being reviewed by the consultant. An additional analysis was conducted by the city's engineering staff and county traffic engineers with the following comments provided, which are listed before you. Important to note that the collector's streets typically have an average daily traffic capacity of 3,000 to 15,000. So from a functional classification perspective, this level of traffic is expected for the road system and was anticipated by the city's 2040 comprehensive transportation plan. Also note, the site has been guided and zoned for such a use since 2007, and the street system was designed with this project in mind. There were some comments about traffic on Adeline Avenue. It is a local street. It differs significantly due to the fact that there are no private driveways directly accessing the street. The apartments have always been anticipated, and that's why the limited number of accesses onto the street were designed that way. The city will continue working with the county in coordination of an overall comprehensive traffic study just to anticipate the impacts of the overall development site in the area and identify any necessary improvements to intersections such as Cona Mera and Akron. Also note that neither the city's consultant or the county's engineering staff disputed the findings that the roadway system was sufficient, had sufficient reserve capacity. With that, I can take any questions. I know we have quite a few people here that can speak to some of the questions that this commission may have that I'm not able to answer. Specifically, we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Dan Schultz. We have a representative from the Dakota County Transportation Department, as well as the city administrator and Public Works Director.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any comments or questions from the commission at this time?
I have one.
Yep, go ahead. Commissioner Reed.
Regarding the parks, we've seen diagrams that show the number of parks in the area, but I think one of the questions that's come up, and it'll come up again, I think in a later motion, is on the actual metrics. So our parks are based, I'm sure, on some kind of per capita. So with the per capita increase of these apartment buildings, how are we calculating and factoring that into the number of parks we have now and are planned? Is there a relationship to current per capita and what the expected growth is?
Okay. And I would defer to Dan Schultz on that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair and commission members. To answer the question about per capita, with a neighborhood park, we look to try and have a guideline set for about 2,000 residents that would be serviced by a neighborhood park. In this area, there are several recreational amenities that are available to the public. There is Greystone Park, which is, I think I have it, I think there's a memo in your packet. Greystone Park is .45 miles away from the edge of, from the center of this development. The future school is .63 miles away, and the future Tallamore is .72 miles away, and Aylesbury is .32 miles away. So there are several areas that are available for recreation. One of the things that I would say is that another guideline that we follow along with a lot of other cities in the metro area throughout the state of Minnesota is we try to identify having a park within a half mile or three-quarters of a mile, which is about an eight to 12, 15-minute walk, and we feel like that's a reasonable amount of space to go. I think we've also talked before with commission members about where we put our parks, and that's done based on types of development and also patterns of development. We look at several different, you know, bits of information when we go ahead and put together our parks master plan. And we have a master plan in the comprehensive guide plan, which is its own chapter. And in that, the system plan talks about growth, and we plan for growth like this. And we look at, you know, how the land is zoned and how it might, you know, how it might develop as part of the, as part of the plan. And so, like I said, we look at trying to target, serve a population of 1,000 to 2,000 people, or approximately 650 households. I looked at the number of households that are in the Greystone development, and it's about 200, I think it was 235, if I recall what I looked up. And so if you add all of these households, you're still not over that threshold of either 2,000 people or 650 households. I would tend to think that a lot of these people are going to look to go to the north a little bit and either use the Meadow, or I'm sorry, not Meadows, the Greystone Park, or maybe even a little bit further east to use Tallamore, so they're not having to cross Akron Avenue. But obviously, like all of you who have had kids in town, they want to go to certain parks. They want to go to the zip line park. My kids, growing up, wanted to go to the fire station park over at Meadows next to the fire station. So, you know, there's a lot of jumping around to parks, and so I think this area is going to have a lot of opportunities. And so I don't think any one space is going to be overrun with use. Now, with that being said, you know, some people might say, well, Aylesbury Park is used four nights a week, the parking lot's full. Well, it's going to be full during baseball, in-house baseball, and in-house soccer, and it was designed to be that way. And that's the same with the rest of our parks that have parking lots and athletic fields. They're designed to be used by the community for, you know, intermural and in-house type sports. But as far as, you know, what our senior planner, Nemcek, mentioned, there's a greenway trail that runs right down Cona Mera. There's going to be an underpass under Highway 3, which is going to get us over to the Ames Soccer Complex at DCTC. It's going to get people down to the Umore Ball Field. And then we are acquiring land from the Amberfields Development, where we're going to be building a 15-acre dog park and 12 pickleball courts. And so that's all interconnected by trails, and it's all in a very walkable manner. So I think hopefully people will look at the big picture for that east side and understand that it's not just, it's not always just, you know, the moving in or development of one little area. You've got to look at the bigger surrounding area. And we don't know yet what that school's going to look like. I'm sure that school that's going to go in at the corner of Akron and Bon Air is going to have some sort of amenities, playground. And the playgrounds that the schools put in are usually twice the size of the city's playgrounds that we put in. I don't know if you can pull up the dais here, but that's one comment that I know our city community development director had asked me about, was just about capacity. And I can just tell you that, you know, for a park like Aylesbury, if we can zoom in on that.
One second, Dan.
So this is just kind of a comparison of playgrounds. And when we looked at developing the park for Aylesbury Park, we knew that was going to be an active, busy area of Rosemount. I mean, we just knew that, looking at the comp guide plan, talking to our planners, we knew that was going to be an area that would have a lot of, a lot of use. So if you look at the playground sizes here, Rosemount Elementary's playground is about 14,000 square feet, which is a large playground, and that's meant to house a lot of kids. That's meant to have recess and being swamped by kids. If you look at Shannon Park, that's about 10,850 square feet. And if you look at city parks near these development areas that we're talking about tonight, Aylesbury Park is 10,600 square feet and has some pretty robust amenities, where we have a climbing spider triangle, like trapeze, piece of equipment where it holds a lot of kids. And we don't put that in most of our neighborhood parks. Greystone Park is 6385 square feet. Bloomfield Park is 5,600 square feet for their playground. Meadows Park is 54. Birch Park is 5,200, and the Flint Hills Athletic Complex is 4,600. So, you know, we look at the patterns that we know are coming for development. We try to right-size the parks by some of the anticipated growth that we're going to see in the kinds of families we're going to see, things like that. So I'm not here to tell people that their opinion is wrong when they think the park is busier than it should be. We build parks to be used. We're thrilled when we hear that there's a lot of kids out in the parks. It's great to drive by on Cona Mera. I don't live far from that area, so I'm driving by Cona Mera all the time. I love seeing full-court pickup basketball games going on. We like seeing the zip line, having three or four kids hanging on the seat, gliding along on the zip line. We think that's great. And so with that, hopefully that helps a little bit on the insight with the parks. But, you know, I feel like from a standpoint of where we've placed our parks, we feel like we place them appropriately where people will have good access for recreation, and more than just one opportunity, they'll have multiple opportunities for recreation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I ask a quick question? The square footage you're showing is just square footage of the playground?
Just the play surface. So it's just the hardwood, mulched hardwood surface. It's just the playground. It doesn't have anything to do with ball fields or soccer fields or parking lots. It's just simply the play surface. And so that's how a lot of people like to equate, you know, how big that play surface is by square feet. So that's what we were just wanting to show tonight, that we did plan ahead, make that one bigger than we usually do. And I can tell you that some of the other ones we're looking at replacing next spring, which would be Clarrett, which is behind Cub Foods. We're going to replace Kidder, and we're going to replace Biscayne. Kidder will probably be about 3,200 square feet. Clarrett will probably be right around 4,800, and Biscayne will be around 5,000 square feet. So again, this is, this is set up to really hold a lot of activity at this park, and so hopefully it's meeting those needs.
Thank you. And Dan, this doesn't include the Amberfields, so yet to come is the Amberfields?
Yeah, correct.
That will be, there'll be an underpass from the, from north of 42 down there?
Correct.
As well.
Madam Chair, there are four more parks that will be added, not including the dog park and the pickleball area. There'll be four more parks as part of the Amberfields Development, which is on the southwest corner of Akron and 42.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for?
Is there a timeline for some of the newer parks and the new school that's being proposed? Is it five years? Is it two years?
I don't have a good timeline for the school. I'm looking at our city administrator to see if he might have communicated with the district more recently than I have, but I don't. The Tallamore Park, we're looking at probably late '23, which is a little bit to the east of this. Greystone already exists. The parks, the dog park and the pickleball, we had our kickoff meeting today. We're working with a consultant, Bolton and Mink. They are going to be designing that. The plan is to bid that out and try to build it this spring of 2023. My understanding is the underpass hopefully will get built next summer, so summer of 2023 under?
42.
County Road 42, thank you. And so there's a lot happening right now, and I know that there'll be a lot of opportunities for the, for the area in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission on this item?
I just had one comment. My main concern last meeting was the fifth story on that second building, and that has been adjusted, so that is good to know. The other question I just had for the traffic, I actually ventured down to this location a couple of times now just to take a look at it. Is there a reason why, let me ask this, is all of the traffic from both of the apartment complexes going to all collect out on Adeline?
From both buildings?
Yes.
Yeah, the two, there's two accesses on Adeline.
Okay, so there'll actually be two driveways on Adeline for the two apartment?
Right. Correct.
My only question was, is there any reason why they didn't consider having an access out of the area onto Cona Mera at the, because it's kind of not really busy right there right now?
Sure.
I was just concerned, or questioned why it wasn't considered.
So without getting too much into Nick Edgar, our Public Works Director's space on that, Cona Mera being a collector's street, the city does try to limit accesses onto that street from public roadways. So having a private driveway onto Cona Mera is not ideal. I think maybe if you have anything to add to that?
No, thanks, Anthony. That's a pretty accurate statement there. The only thing that I'll add is that part of the issue there that we run into with placing a private driveway or even a roadway in close proximity to another, to an intersection such as the one by Akron, that can tend to cause congestion access-type issues when it's so close together. So that is why the routing was laid out in that way to place it off of the local street directly adjacent on Adeline instead.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for city staff at this time? Anthony, I believe the applicant is here this evening as well to speak about the changes that they made to this building?
Correct. I think if they would like to come forward, they are welcome to do so at this time.
Good evening.
Evening, members of the commission. My name is Peter Orth. I am a devolvement manager for Schaefer Richardson, and I will be the project manager for this site. We just want to thank you again for giving us the time to take a look at the site and consider some of the feedback from both the public as well as the commissioners. The decision to reduce the height obviously was, I don't want to say a no-brainer, but it made sense for the project. And in doing so, we also provided some visuals that Anthony just showed to show the, a section view of the, of each building, kind of in reference to the streetscape and for neighboring structures across the street, both to the east and to the west, just to show what the visual impact would be for both sides. If there's any comments on that, we can, happy to answer any questions on the height. The reduction in height also resulted in a reduction in 10% of the units for the whole project, and that also reduced the traffic impact in the traffic analysis. I know that both of these were aspects that were very important for the commission to consider last time, and our consultant did reissue a new version of that traffic analysis to include the reduction in units. Again, it was about a 10% reduction in trips. The level of service for each of those intersections, again, not to dive too far into the traffic analysis, I know we've talked about it previously and the engineers have looked at it, but it does reduce the total congestion for the, for the entire site. So that's also a benefit for the project. And then we were also asked to provide a photometric study, kind of showing some of the light distribution for the site. Again, kind of standard overhead pole-mounted fixtures, not exceeding 20 feet. Our buildings are going to have some downlighting as well, but with the buffering for the trees that we have in the landscaping plan, that's going to also offer a barrier between our project and the right-of-way. So with all these changes, I think it's a much more palatable project. To staff's comment, we are compliant with zoning in all aspects, including the parking. We do have 1.7 stalls that we are actually building for the, for this project as opposed to 1.54 from the previous submittal. We know that that's a comfortable amount of parking that we provided based on similar developments that we've done in the past, and I'm happy to provide examples. But if there are any questions about the plans, any revisions that we've made, I'm happy to address those at this time.
Thank you. Peter, I just have a couple of questions just to confirm and clarify. The, with the reduction of the one story, the units did not change in Building B, which is the, which, that Building A is the market rate and Building B would be the, not low income, but the workforce housing?
That's correct.
Thank you. So, okay, and then the amenities in terms of the pool and all that, that is staying the same?
Staying the same. Correct.
Okay, so no loss of amenities for the residents, just a different, slightly different mix of units in Building A and 30 less units?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions from commissioners?
I don't have questions but comments. Thank you for the drawings, the section drawings that show the scale of the building with the housing across. It's good to know that it's not this tall imposing blocky building. It's pretty obvious it was well represented. Also liked how the building is massed, broken up, and it's not the solid block sitting there, but we had the elements that were shown all through and planned out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, just one more clarification, I guess. So the current plan is to go to 1.54, but can go up to 1.8?
So 1.7 constructed with about 90 parking stalls offered as proof of parking in the southwest corner of the site. So if the city determines later on after construction that there's a need for additional parking, that's what those are reserved for. Right now, it's just flat. You know, there might be a curb there, but that's what, that's what that's offered as proof of parking.
And if the?
To hit the two stalls per unit.
With the reserve, they would go up to two. With the reserve, it would go up to two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony, do you have anything further on this before we proceed?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, I do not.
Okay. Um, so if other commissioners have comments or questions, um, we can hear those at this time. This wa, this was a public hearing last time on September twenty-seventh, so it is not a public hearing this evening. And we will, we've got two motions before us. I will kind of echo Commissioner Tiergarden's comments and Commissioner Rivera's. I appreciate the applicant taking back the feedback and reducing the height, and doing some of the extra, the photometric plan for us and reviewing the traffic, um, and such, and bringing it into conformance with, with the zoning ordinance for that area. I do believe that the plan is now in conformance with the comp plan and zoning. Um, and this land use has been planned since two thousand and seven for this area. So I, I appreciate them taking the time to, to review it and, um, make those adjustments.
I, I would echo the same things. I, I think, you know, my concerns, uh, from the last meeting were really about the, about the building height and making a good transition to the residential areas there. That's been resolved, the parking, I think that's been resolved. Last meeting, we talked about security. I felt comfortable with, with the way they described security for the, the complex. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of approving this.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
No, Madam Chair, with the changes made by the applicant and the additional information, all my concerns have been addressed. And I would put forth a motion to recommend City Council approve the preliminary plat for the subdivision of Outlet A, Preswick Place, Town Home, subject to the five conditions noted in the staff report.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Abear. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion for the second. Motion to recommend the City Council approve the planned unit development final site and building plan to construct two multifamily buildings in the northeast quadrant of Conimera Trail in Akron Avenue, subject to the following conditions numbered one through six.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That concludes this item on the agenda this evening. This item will move forward to the City Council meeting on November, tentatively on November fifteenth. The next item on our agenda this evening, of the agenda which I've lost, um, is a public hearing request by Akron Forty-two LLC for approval of preliminary and final plats, site plan review, and rezoning of a portion of the site to develop a two-hundred-and-twenty-five unit multifamily community. And this, um, is a public hearing that is being reopened and continued from our September twenty-seventh meeting. And Anthony, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, staff is, uh, requesting that the Planning Commission reopen the public hearing for this. Uh, following a review of the letters that went out for public hearing notices, staff found, uh, shortfall in the total number of letters that should have been out. So in an effort to be transparent and allow anyone who, uh, would like to provide comment that maybe did not receive notice, uh, staff is, uh, requesting a reopening of the public hearing. Uh, as just a, uh, kind of background summary of this request, uh, the applicant is requesting, uh, rezoning of the site from C-four PUD, uh, general commercial to R-four high-density, uh, residential, as well as a, um, site plan review, uh, to construct an apartment building and a preliminary and final plats for the site. Uh, should note that the, the City Council did, uh, re-guide this, approve a, an amendment to the city's comprehensive guide plan, uh, changing the land use of the site from, uh, CC Community Commercial to R, or, excuse me, HDR High Density Residential. Uh, so updates for the commission from that twenty, September twenty-seventh meeting, uh, there was an up, updated site plan that reduces the height of the southern portion of the building to three stories, reducing the number of units by thirteen to two-hundred-and-twelve units. Uh, the landscape plan has been updated to provide additional screening around the pool area. That was a comment received by the commission. And additional, uh, amenity of a pickleball court has been added to the site plan. Uh, the applicants also provided renderings depicting the proposed building as it appears from various view sheds and submitted a traffic analysis for review uh, for the traffic impacts on the surrounding roadways. The site location for the overall plat is in the northwest quadrant of Akron Avenue and County Road forty-two, uh, south of Conimera Trail, highlighted here in yellow. The land use designation for the site is, uh, High Density Residential, shown in brown in the center of the, the image. And the requested rezoning is from the, uh, C-four General Commercial to the, uh, R-four High Density Residential, which is consistent with the city's comprehensive land use plan for the site. The final plat being proposed by the applicant shows two buildable lots, the first being on the northern portion of the site, which would be the location of the apartment building, as well as a buildable lot in the southeast corner of the site, which would remain zoned commercial for a future commercial development. Uh, additional land, shown as Outlot A, remains available for commercial development. The city did complete a study or an exercise in twenty-twenty-one to identify future development patterns. I think the commission is, uh, aware of this from the last meeting. Just wanted to highlight that the proposed residential development, uh, fits with that sort of vision for the area, uh, allowing addition or, uh, can, commercial development to continue to be possible along forty-two and at the corner of Akron Avenue. Again, a rendering from that visioning showing in the, in the apartment area, High Density Residential. The, um, through street is realigned a little bit. Uh, but I just wanted to note that, uh, because there was some confusion, uh, last time, the actual proposed roadway does not align with Aylesbury. It actually, uh, connects with Abbey Field a little to the north. And I show that, uh, shortly. Uh, the site itself, again, is seven point nine-seven acres with a density of twenty-six point six units per acre. Uh, when the city's comprehensive traffic plan or transportation plan is designed, it takes into account, uh, maximum buildable area. Uh, the, the proposed rezoning from commercial to R-four High Density is the similar intensity. And therefore, um, the traffic, uh, impacts on the streets are, are not as exaggerated as going from another use to R-four. Again, the total number of units is two-hundred-and-twelve, and that's a reduction of thirteen from the previously proposed two-twenty-five. Uh, here's the site plan review, or the site plan showing the actual alignment for the proposed street here. Uh, the access points into the proposed apartment building are from this, uh, street running from Abbey Field to Akron Avenue, uh, with the connection being made, uh, northeast of the Aylesbury Avenue, uh, intersection. As I said, the landscaping plan was updated. Additional trees were provided around this, the pool area. And the site, uh, requires a total of a hundred-and-fourteen trees. Hundred-and-nineteen trees are provided in the, in the landscape plan. Uh, the city is not looking to acquire parkland with this development, is recommending cash in lieu. Here's one of the renderings provided by the applicant from the intersection of Aylesbury and Abbey Field of the, uh, proposed apartment building. This being the three-story area. The, uh, to, further in the distance being four stories in height. Uh, on the right-hand side of the picture is the field as it appears today. As you can see, there's a wide pipeline easement running along Abbey Field Avenue, uh, creating additional buffer from those residences on that side of the street. A little closer in here from the actual intersection of the new East West Road connecting Abbey Field to Akron Avenue, you can see the, um, reduced height, three-story building. And then here from, uh, the backyard of one of the, uh, uh, houses on, uh, Aylesbury Court. And then finally, from the north, uh, at Abbey Field and Conimera Trail. Uh, in the foreground here would be the stormwater ponds that would be utilized for onsite, uh, water management. Again, Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, reviewed the proposed development and continues to recommend fee in lieu of land dedication. Uh, the, there's the additional pickleball court, uh, in addition to a dog park and the swimming pool, as earlier mentioned. Uh, I don't want to go too far into it, as Dan did a really good job, uh, with the last item, describing how the, um, Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, reviews proposed developments and, uh, plans for parks in the future. Uh, the traffic analysis that was submitted by the applicant, uh, is being reviewed by staff. It supports the assumptions made by the twenty-forty comprehensive plan regarding development in this part of the city. Uh, peak hours are anticipated to see seventy-eight trips in the morning and eighty-three trips in the PM hours. And then sixty percent of those trips are anticipated to travel west on County Road forty-two, with thirty, uh, traveling east. There's three actions being recommended for this item. Uh, I would recommend ordering them as they are on the screen, with the first being the rezoning motion, uh, followed by the plat motion, and then finished up with the site plan review. Uh, with that, I can take any questions. As I said, there are plenty of people here who can, uh, help support any answers I'm not able to speak to. I know we have the applicant, as well as the property owner who is selling the site to the applicant.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions from the commission on this item?
I do have one.
Yep, Commissioner Rivera.
Um, I guess I'm not familiar with the term "reguided" by the City Council. Can you, can someone explain what that exactly means?
So the city has a comprehensive land use plan, and that's the overarching guide for development within the city. And then beneath that is the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. So when, uh, land is reguided, it changes the land use designation so that any future zoning must be consistent with that land use designation. Uh, it went before the Planning Commission in July and was approved by the council in August.
Does that answer your question?
I just wanted to understand the process.
Any other questions from the commission? At this time. Okay, thank you, Anthony. At this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item, and we will invite those that would like to come forward and speak to do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. And we will start with inviting our applicant up and the landowner up to speak on this project at this time.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, and thank you, Anthony, for the work, um, and the presentation. Uh, the updates from last time, as Anthony covered, were the step-down of the building.
Can I get you to just state your name and address?
Oh yeah, of course, my apologies. Andy Bolick with Rohr's Companies, uh, we're to Carlson Parkway, Plymouth, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Um, the changes from last time, we did try to relocate the pool to the northeastern side of the site, but ran into setback issues that would have required a variance. So we instead went with a more heavy screening option, um, around the current pool. And the other main changes were reducing the building size, so it steps down to the next-door neighborhood a little bit more, which did result in a loss of units. But otherwise, we're, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your work in looking at, um, adjustments as well. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do, actually. Anthony, right?
Andy.
Andy, okay. Um, you know, one of the, the sticking points for me has been how this compares to the original visioning study. And if, if you recall, without bringing it up, the visioning study, we had, you know, two, three buildings, and it, the way it was laid out, possibly townhomes, it made a really nice transition, I thought, to residential area. So here we've got, you know, one really large building that spanned across there. So can you talk about, you know, what factors went into this sort of design versus other options to break it up and maybe make a better transition?
Yeah, that's a really good question. It primarily comes down to the zoning and the requirement of units per acre. So the, does my cursor work here? It doesn't, but the, or maybe it does. So the gas pipeline easement is right along the proposed, uh, previous area there. So much of the site is not necessarily buildable. And it, so you're kind of solving for the limiting factor between units, parking stalls, and creating a building. So, I mean, if we break it up, we lose units and we end up not being able to hit the density guidance. So that was the primary motivation for the building being like this. Uh, we did add quite a few jogs along the building and try to break up the materiality. And I, I mean, our architect is here as well, if you'd like to kind of hear more about that piece of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the landowner is here to speak this evening as well?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Joe Jablonsky, uh, from sixteen-three-oh-five Thirty-Sixth Avenue, Plymouth, Minnesota, representing Arkon or Akron Forty-two. I'm here tonight as a representative of Akron Forty-two. Just for clarification sake, Lennar is a part-owner of a joint venture in that. So Akron Forty-two is not solely owned by Lennar. Even though I am a representative of Akron Forty-two, I am a, uh, employee of Lennar. You can see my Lennar shirt. But I wanted to make that clear, because I think there may be some confusion there that we are representing a joint venture and multiple ownership in this parcel. So I just wanted to go through and, and maybe clarify some of the background, some of the history, um, and, and what brought forth the, um, the request in July to re-guide it. Um, you know, we've been working on, on the Preswick area for a long time. Um, the preliminary plat came through in two thousand and seven. Um, and this area was designated as commercial upfront and originally. And, um, we've been marketing it, and obviously we've built, uh, Lennar has built homes around it for a number of communities. Uh, as the, uh, Parks Director was mentioning, Talamoor Park and Aylesbury Park and Greystone Park, those are all neighborhoods that we helped build. And one of the problems when we've been marketing the, the commercial piece all along has been, there's just not enough residents in the area to make it available or viable commercial option. And part of that is some of the things that are, uh, the U-More, um, the unknowns that were going on with U-More, um, some of the things going on further to the east that, you know, there's not a lot of development. So this particular area for commercial has been underserved for a long time. Um, we've been actively marketing it with a broker for over ten years and really have not gotten any interest whatsoever in it. Finally, we, we started to, you know, relook at what else can we do with it? What else can, can go on there? So we approached the, uh, Planning Commission and the City Council about re-guiding it, and that was approved in, in July. And the land use designation changed at that point to High Density Residential. So now we have an active user or a, a user of interest on that property who would like to move forward. And we're just looking for your support in that. And, uh, happy to answer any questions and shed any light on, uh, answering anything else that we could do to help you out making those decisions.
Thank you, Joe. Can you, the, the southern part of the property is zoned as commercial still.
Correct.
And does Lennar, you've only asked for this northern section to be re-guided, um, and now rezoned with this project. Do you, what do you envision for that southern portion?
That's a, a great question, Madam Chair. One of the things that did happen very quickly after the zoning designation changed is we started to get more interest in the commercial properties. Um, it wasn't as big of a user because of the size of the space has been condensed, but it, it kind of very quickly started to happen that, okay, now we're starting to see other higher-density uses. We're starting to see more residential, um, users for the area. So, uh, very quickly, we started getting interest from convenience store-type things, gas station-type things, um, daycare-type uses. But, uh, one of our concerns is, as the landowner is, you know, if, if the high-density residential is not there and not part of it, I think the commercial and the interest in the commercial will also, um, not go away, but it'll be put on the back burner again. And, you know, we've been working hard on this for a long time and we really want to see things move forward.
And I know you don't have a crystal ball, but with those users you've talked to, do you feel that there is significant interest that we will see projects move forward in the next twelve months with that commercial? Or do you think it's going to be another two, three, four years before they move forward?
I, I think that depends heavily on, on the, the high-density residential moving forward. Um, I think that if it does, there will be a user. We have been working very closely with somebody that we're working on negotiating contracts with. So I, I think they have a very strong interest in, in joining this site and joining. So, I think they have a very strong interest in joining this site and joining an opportunity here, but they're kind of waiting to see what happens and how all of this plays out as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other commissioners with questions for the applicant or the landowner?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. At this time, we would invite any members of the public that would like to come forward and comment on this item. Just a recap of the comments we did hear at the last meeting and the concerns we heard at the last meeting. So, if you spoke at the last meeting, you do not necessarily need to speak again this evening. And the concerns we did hear were around traffic, parks, screening around the pool, noise, the height of the building, the four stories and building height, safety with traffic, schools, landscaping, the parking, and then the market need. And so, with that, I will open up the public hearing for anyone that would like to speak on this item this evening. And just a reminder to state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commission. My name is Brookskin. I am at 14363 Alborough Avenue. I spoke last time about the services and some of the things, and I wanted to give you guys an update. I did a bunch of research in the last month since we were here to let you know kind of how that works. So, everybody, like you said, is included in your planning, and you guys are giving great information to the schools, to the police, and to the fire, right? So, one of the things I found out from the school department when I talked with Mark, our financial director over there, is that there are two schools planned, but there's no funding for the schools right now. So, he would have to go through and get a referendum, and all of the taxpayers that are here currently would have to pay for that referendum to build these new schools to support all of the building that's going on in this corner. So, with that said, if that doesn't pass, we don't have a school. Right now, the schools in Rosemount are at capacity and overcapacity in many of those places. So, having three apartment buildings going in within two years, the fastest they could get a school open would be fall of maybe '25 if they can get everything passed. So, kind of thinking through that process, the police kind of has carte blanche right now to hire as many as they want to, but their issue is hiring. They can't really hire the cops, and so they're having the lowest applications they've ever seen. And with the change of mayor and potentially a change of council at the city council level, they may not have that funding to continue to go forward to support all of this. Just same thing from a fire and a paramedic perspective. I also called a handful of the daycare centers in town, and it is a two-year wait to get a child into a daycare here. Almost a three-year wait if you have an infant. And so, when you think about these high densities, I'm not saying that you should necessarily change the zoning of this, but maybe slow down the building in this and see how it goes first in making sure that we have the services to support all these people. Not, you know, the transportation, we've talked about that. I know a handful of neighbors that use busing, but they have to drive to Apple Valley to get there. And so, if these high-density places don't have a lot of cars or people that don't have vehicles, there's not a really easy way for them to get to work or to get into the public transit. So, I just wanted to bring those things back to your guys' attention. If you have any further questions for me, let me know. But again, I just want to let you know, I did do a little bit more research to understand the process and to understand that as of right now, if these were to open in 16 months, like the other development on the other side said that they could have them up and running 16 to 18 months, once it's approved and they have their funding, if they were to do that by January, we wouldn't have the services to support them when they open.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, distinguished members of the commission, thank you for your time today. I'm Nick LaBelle, 14260 Aylesbury Court, Rosemount. And I'd like to thank the developer for, you know, listening to some of our concerns, but I still have some concerns about the building itself and screening of the pool. Well, screening and definition matters, right? There's different levels of screen. What does that mean? Is it a solid fence? Is it a fence with certain-sized openings? So, you know, those are some of the things that, you know, I can use buzzwords too, but being an engineer, being exact matters, right? So, that's a nice fluffy story, we'll say, but without some definition, it doesn't mean much to me. Okay. Couple of the other things that I'd like to talk about are security. We never really talked about security with this building. I believe the other project, the Schaefer Richardson project, talked quite nicely about their security and had a wonderful plan. I've heard, yet to hear, anything on security for this building. So, if anything, I'd suggest that developer speak with the other developer and get their plan because that sounds like a pretty good idea. And then also, the buffer zone thing, you know, this is, again, we're making that transition, right? There's no, it's a huge step off from two stories to four stories and some of that. And, you know, there was some effort made there, but I still think that originally, when it comes to the zoning of the site, we've already been rezoned like, I'm going to say, two to three times, so agricultural to residential, which I think was townhomes, and then it went to commercial, and now we're up to high density. So, we're just kind of making it up as we go along, for lack of a better word on that. So, is this really the best use of that property? You know, it's, this is really the center geographically of Rosemount, and this makes sense to have commercial here. So, that's, once we've filled that in with more houses, we don't have that space back, right? That means we have to level things to put more residential or more commercial in. So, does it make sense to do that? So, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about too, and maybe is more or less a question for the commission here to ask the developers, is how they plan to do their market rate. And I would specifically ask them if they use a software package called YieldStar by a company called RealPage. And if you're not following the news lately, you'll find out that there is collusion going on between all the different apartment buildings, essentially using the same software package to raise rents significantly for those people that are in these market-rate apartments. So, there are several lawsuits going on right now. Hate to have another, you know, plaintiff to those lawsuits. So, some questions you might want to ask before moving forward with this is how they set that market rate and if they're colluding with other businesses on that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, we're going to ask the audience, you can come on up, ma'am. The applause, this is not an applause-type of environment. We all understand that you want to applaud, and you're going to support what these folks say, but really, in this kind of government-public setting, we're not here to do the applause thing. So, let's please hold back on the applause just out of the respect for the process, and I think it kind of makes it feel a bit more adversarial. So, we all know why you folks are here. There's no surprise. So, appreciate holding off on the applause. So, sorry, please go ahead.
I'd have, my name is Katie Emmets. Good evening, everyone. I live at 142128 Alma Avenue, and I have kind of just a general question. So, I had heard earlier that the notices weren't provided prior to the meeting, right, adequately. Was that done prior to the guiding or re-guiding that was done in July? And so, I think there would have been probably a lot more residents here if that had been publicly noticed prior to that meeting. One thing that I just wanted to share, and I was looking at the envisioning statement and what this area was originally envisioned for a year or two years ago. And so, what I'm seeing in that statement is the intersection will be anchored by the recreation center, that there will be state-of-the-art facilities, and then an area for public gathering, right? And a variety of events throughout the year can be held there. Surrounding the open space are smaller one-to-two-story commercial buildings with generous sidewalks and patio areas for strolling and sitting. The plan depicts mixed-use buildings with commercial on the lower level and residential above. So, if we keep going back to that envisioning statement, this was not what necessarily was envisioned there. When I look at the actual language that's on the website, that's not what's there, okay? The other piece or just observation on that envisioning statement would be that there was a park at the top where the retaining ponds are listed on that chart what I saw earlier. And so, that's the only piece that I would just bring to everyone's notice. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Kevin Zock. I live at 14301 Aylesbury Avenue. Last time I was here, I was pretty fired up, but that really just came from wanting the best for my community and the safety of people who live around me and for me and my wife. So, really, the two main areas that I was concerned with before were, again, safety. So, really, from a traffic standpoint, how are the kids and the families going to be safe walking around if there's increased traffic? So, with that, I would ask, what's the plan, not only on traffic from a vehicle standpoint, but from a pedestrian standpoint as well? And then my other big issue was the transition plan, the single-family homes to this four-story building, does not really fit in that comprehensive plan. So, I would ask, what really does that transition look like if this goes through? Are those trees mature? Is there a way to put in more obstacles, more screening, something to maybe really try to make that transition more clear? And in addition to that, the parks I had a question about with Dan, I'll say our nieces love Aylesbury Park. So, it's, I mean, I want everyone to be able to enjoy them. So, as long as that's being thought through, that's great. From a schooling standpoint, a lot of people come to Rosemount to start their family because they, Rosemount has great schools, and I don't want that to change, right? My wife and I are planning hopefully starting a family, and we want to, you know, be in a place with a great school system. And to me, you know, it's hard to just keep something at that level if we're adding all these residents and trying to build new schools. How are we going to pay for great teachers, you know, the resources, everything else that's needed in that department? So, I'd ask what the plan is there as well. And then, my last question would be, I keep hearing about the lifetime, and I would ask, you know, how does this plot itself affect that lifetime plan that's going in as well? So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Clayton Miracle. I live at 14388 Alma Avenue. Currently, with 269 signatories of our petition to quote "oppose any rezoning of this plat for high-density residential purposes," end quote, "it is clear and obvious as to the desires and wishes of the residents directly impacted by the decisions that all of you will make." While we appreciate your commission addressing our concerns raised in the last planning meeting and taking these concerns into consideration, make no mistake that it is our goal that you all vote to not recommend any type of rezoning of the plot in question from commercial to high-density residential. We simply desire that the city keep its original commitment to the area and the residents impacted as laid out in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Please put forward whatever motions necessary to prevent any rezoning of the plot in question from commercial to high-density residential. Thank you, and we hope the commission does right by its fellow residents.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission, Madam Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Evan Caesar. I live at 14300 Aylesbury Avenue, right across the street from the proposed development. The only really question or comment I have is the developer mentioned that they were having trouble getting commercial in here because of the lack of residential. Well, from this meeting, we just approved a new high-density residential right up the road within a block, and then in the next 18 months, there's 1,000 homes going right across 42. So, how would the development answer, once that is built, will that be enough to sell some commercial real estate there in this plot there? I would hesitate to hastily evolve this plan until all the other approved plans are developed, and then we can see what happens commercially from there. I think that'd be wise. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item this evening?
Good evening, and thank you for listening to my concern. I spoke last time. My name is Idole Oliva. I'm at 14277 Aylesbury Avenue. And my family and I were first-time homeowners. We were born and raised in a different country, and we're absolutely thankful for the opportunity to live here and own a home, which is an American dream for a lot of people, and it's for us. And so, we did a lot of research to find the best place to live, and we found that Rosemount was that place for our family. And I want to echo some of the comments regarding childcare. So, I have three boys. I have a 16-month-old boy, and it's really hard to find daycare in Rosemount. And you want to keep them here, but it's really hard. So, I don't know if, in the traffic analysis, there's counts of how many trips I make because I work in Minneapolis and I commute back and forth, have to drop off three kids sometimes to be able to come back home and drive them again for soccer, back and forth. I don't know if my neighbors across the street will see, but we drive like crazy. We put it more than 30,000 miles a year, and we do it because we choose to live in Rosemount. So, I just want to make sure that, again, a lot of the needs are met for a lot of the residents that will be coming because this will be a really severe problem, in my opinion. I also have a background living in high-dense communities, and I know it is trouble, especially for safety. So, I want to make sure that, again, that's being addressed. So, if we're going to be welcoming more residents, that's enough, there's enough safety provided for everyone leaving, so the current residents and the new residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the?
Hi, my name is Mike Polsky. I live at 14176 Aylesbury Avenue. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, so this is my first opportunity to speak to you. I also think that this project, this rezoning motion, has to be looked at differently than it did last meeting because now you have approved to put 305 units kitty-corner. You know, it's kitty-corner from where you're proposing to rezone this. In July of 2021, you changed the comprehensive plan. I just tried to Google it quick. I would be shocked if it didn't have anything to do with the Lifetime Fitness announcement that they were coming. And that alone spurs interest. Development spurs development. So, the first person to come forward with the plan is high-density, and it's a viable plan, I'm not saying it's not, but it's not zoned for that. We haven't given, truly given it, an option to become commercialized. Commissioner Rivera stated at the last meeting that the center of Rosemount is DCTC. There is a lot of space in Rosemount that has not been developed. I would think the natural development's going to go south and east. Development will come. For you to change this zoning because you have a plan on the table, I think, is wrong. I mean, it was said earlier, give it, give the opportunity for what you just approved earlier to get going. For all the other single-family, I believe there's more high-density coming south of 42. There's a lot of people coming. Some quick numbers that I think are very relevant. You just approved 305 units. You are going to vote on whether or not to approve 212 units. That's a total of 517 units. Times that by two, and you get 1,000. If you do the math, you are going to increase Rosemount's population by 4%. You're going to increase the population by 4% at the corner of Akron and Conomara. That's just wrong. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Sidwell, and my address is 14129 Abercorn Avenue. I debated whether or not I would speak tonight, but I think it is critical because all of my counterparts and other people here are from the area immediately adjacent. We live in the Prestwick neighborhood that is immediately to the north of Conomara and to the west of Akron. And I know that this was discussed at the last meeting, but I am, I want to bring up the issue of, and this is in light of what was just approved in terms of the other, you know, 300 units, and the conversations about park and traffic and green space because we are in a different position. Prestwick, the northern part, was built without a park. And I want you to consider whether or not, it's not just about the number of people at a park and the placement, it's access. I have a daughter who I brought tonight, and we are, and everybody in that very, very large area are cut off from park access. The folks on the other side, they have the park without crossing any busy streets. In order for us to access a park, we have to cross Akron, and I invite you and encourage you to come and watch the intersection of 141, which is how we have to access in Akron if you want to go to Greystone. I would also encourage you at busy periods of the day to come and look at Conomara and traffic. My daughter is unable to safely access these parks, as is anybody in that Prestwick neighborhood because we have to cross those busy streets. So, I would certainly question, Conomara has So I would certainly question, Conomara has a flashing traffic walk, crosswalk, which people routinely ignore. I've almost been hit while I was pushing our neon-colored burly with my daughter in it on multiple occasions. People go 50 instead of the, the zone 40, 45 there. Akron has no traffic control devices. If you, as a child or an adult, want to get across to Greystone, you have to cross all of Akron with no traffic control device. It is extremely troubling to me that we are focusing on just traffic and placement and density without actually looking at access, and that there's a very large neighborhood which is cut off from green space and parks without having to cross very busy streets. So I would certainly ask the commission and ultimately the council what they intend to do in terms of creating traffic control devices or other things that are going to keep our children safe. And the other thing I would just reiterate, I'm troubled by the owners relying on, without providing any facts whatsoever, that the interest, the commercial interest now is solely based on this plan, when, again, Lifetime was announced, Umore was sold, and the other thing was approved, to say without any support whatsoever that this potential rezoning is what's driving the commercial interests without any additional facts. I'm a lawyer, I trade in facts, and I think that I'm extremely troubled by the commission relying on that statement without any additional support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening. I'm Christina Powell. I live at 14240 Aylesbury Court. I just want to emphasize two things. I mean, one, I think you've talked about the juxtaposition of single-family homes, all of a sudden this four-story building. I mean, I'm going to look out my window and just see a four-story building, that's all I can see. I can't see anything else when I look out my window. I think it makes more sense if you can gradually get up to that, right? I think the other point, then, is about commercial. I don't really think there's much commercial east of Highway 3, right? I mean, where do you go? There's no gas stations until you get to 3. So most of the time, if I need to go, I'll get gas when I go to work in Inver Grove Heights, or I'll stop at the store in Inver Grove Heights somewhere else, because there's nothing by my house to stop for, to get. So I think it makes more sense to have more commercial available for people to stop or to run out from their house to get something real quick at night if they need something, to get gas and not have to go to a different city just to go to the gas station or something like that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm Tina Anger. I live at 14276 Aylesbury Avenue. And I just wanted to highlight, again, the draw of living in Rosemount. And, and one of those key things is this small-town hometown feel that Rosemount has. And as we consider this plot of land, this is really our opportunity to create a community connection point, a place where we don't always have to rely on Central Park for all of our community events. I know our community means a lot to all of us here, and I would love to see not only commercial opportunity, but additional space to gather as a community and continue to build what we love so much about living here. So I just hope that you guys consider more community space. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. As we heard, some of the same concerns that we heard last time again, and some new feedback on, on the plan. I know, Anthony, we've got some additional staff here to help, help with these. I don't know if you have any thoughts of stuff you wrote down that you want to start by responding to, or if you want me to go through my list?
Yeah, I can speak to a couple of the comprehensive planning questions.
Thank you.
Let's see here. Just to note, the visioning study for the site and the area is just that, it's a concept. It did not go through the analysis that an application for development goes through. So, you know, take that into account when understanding what the, the project before you is versus what might have been put together, and then consider the land uses of those sites. With regards to high-density residential, the comprehensive plan does identify high-density residential as compatible with almost all uses except industrial, and that care should be taken to provide buffering, which can be, can done using distance or landscaping. The, the site here itself, there's quite a bit of space between the actual houses due to the pipeline on the other side of Abbey Field Avenue. There's a significant buffer between the building and the houses. It's not next door on the parcel adjacent to any single-family homes. Additionally, screening, the, the city code specifically says screening can be done using landscaping, birmingham, distance, the applicant's choice to use landscaping. I don't know if they have a plan to provide some walls around it, around the pool. But again, typically, the, the city code doesn't require any screening of a swimming pool, and I think if you would look throughout the city, there's a lot of swimming pools a lot closer to houses than this one. Regarding future development and where it's going to occur, to the east is land owned by Flint Hills. The only development they have indicated that they would allow for development is, is industrial and business park in nature. Additionally, the eastern side of DCTC is guided for business park and industrial uses in that part of the Umore area. South of DCTC is contaminated, and also the area with Dakota aggregates is being mined until 2040. So just kind of some responses to the comments the planning commission received. The regiding of the site occurred prior to the application for the project that was previously reviewed. Let's see, is there anything else here? Security, that's a question for the applicant. I can't, can't answer that one. And then I think, you know, with regards to schooling and police, I would defer to our city administrator. He's having those conversations with the school district and the police department. And then, I guess, just transportation and safety, I would defer to our public works director, as well as the county. The county being the jurisdiction over Akron Avenue and their decision-making process for improvements to the roads that are under their control, as well as our public works director with regards to improvements to roads that are under the city's control. Did I miss anything?
Thank you. I, no, but I think you covered most everything that I have at the moment. I would just wonder if you could, if you have available a map to show us. So I know when we did the envisioning, I think maybe you were just on it, or that one works too. We, we envisioned commercial, some residential here with some commercial, and I know we've had lots of discussions on the, the first-floor commercial and residential above it, and while that was a, a vision at one point, it doesn't appear to be a real market, something that we, that developers want to do, because there's not much of a market for it. So, you know, in terms of this, we still do have lots of commercial at this corner, correct?
Madam Chair, there's a commercial guided in the southwest quadrant. The southern portion of the site is still guided for commercial. This entire area is guided for commercial, as well as some east of the DCTC property, the DCTC and Emerald Isle property. Additionally, the land use plan does have commercial, commercially-guided land at 145th and County Road 42. And then, of course, the area immediately east of Highway 3 has some commercially-guided land.
Madam Chair, maybe I can add to a few of the points that Anthony brought up, responding to some of the comp plan comments. Just note that the Rosemont Port Authority, the, the board tasked with economic development review under their, their guidance, has been very aware of the amount of commercial acreage, high-density acreage, and other land uses that comprise the, the city of Rosemont. They've taken a very active role over the past, I'll say, six months or so, making sure that there is adequate supply within there. And the other piece, as it relates to our comprehensive land use planning, right now we're operating under a 2040 land use plan as required by Met Council that gets updated every 10 years. So one thing to consider or note that as a part of that is that, I know there were some comments made about how this continues to evolve, and, you know, when, when and how does it stop changing? It is reviewed and assessed, and there are changes made actively every 10 years as a part of that long-range planning as communities grow, especially in this area of Dakota County within Rosemont, that those adjustments are made on that 10-year cycle. Within the comp planning process, there is allowance for amendments to those comp plans. That's something that was referenced earlier, and that's what was done on the northern portion of this site to accommodate this type of development. So these are all actions that are occurring within the cities approved, not only by Rosemont and its elected leaders, but also Met Council, which maintains the purview over long-range planning within the Twin Cities area.
Thank you. I think, Anthony, we covered the comments that, from a planning perspective. Logan, can we ask you to speak a little bit on the, the schools and your conversations with the school and how that works, and what, what our responsibility is tied to that, as well as the safety?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I will give the first gal that spoke in the white sweater credit. She's very accurate in what she researched and found out from the school's perspective. We meet with them, I would say probably twice, twice, every two months, every three months at the, at the longest. They both share plans like this, to talk about their long-term vision, to respond to population growth in the city. And you're exactly right, that they need to and intend to come to taxpayers with a bond referendum this fall, potentially this summer. Or there's a couple statutory times where school districts can do those bond questions. I think it might be May and August, but I might be getting those incorrect. So very quickly, and then you're exactly right, that once that is approved or is not approved, then they would kick into high gear the design and construction process of, of the properties. And so the city's purview is to share with them these types of plans, to be transparent in what we see in our comprehensive plan. They have a demographer that they talk to a lot when you watch school board meetings and, and as they project out. They know, for example, the amount of kids that would live in a traditional Falmor Glen or Prestwick home as compared to the amount of kids that might come out of a, of a unit or a family that would more likely choose to live in a market-rate apartment complex. There's a lot of demography and demographic science behind that, and so they rely a lot on types of uses, types of mix of uses. And from what I've gleaned from their demographer and their staff, single-family, of course, produces more students than, than a market-rate apartment would. It's certainly not, no students coming out of here, but it produces, a, a, a single-family home would, would produce more students and would likely be of, of an increased focus or concern, I would say, for them. We were really pleased and are really pleased that they own land just north of here at Akron and Bonner. It is contingent upon getting it approved by the voters. I would say one of the comments that, I don't know if it was Kevin or somebody made about, about kind of getting that approved and what, what it takes to get that approved. Certainly an argument could be made that the impact on taxpayers is lessened by the infusion of a couple of, of highly tax-generating apartment complexes. So the question to residents, when a vote were to go to them, the calculation that's going to be done in the publication to residents to say, "Impact on a homeowner," it'll be lessened by the fact that there's a broader tax base upon which to spread taxes. So it's just an anecdote to say that this does potentially help, certainly helps the school district generate more tax revenue and potentially generates a, a greater ability to get a bond referendum approved. But yes, they own land on the north side, they have an option to purchase land on the south side. They have told us that, you know, Rosemount Middle School is, is in need of an expansion, where they would build a new Rosemount Middle School, and we've got a parcel of land that they, we are talking with them about for that property. So I think folks understand it's, it's fairly straightforward. It certainly isn't our responsibility, you know, to build schools, we're not the school board. But we also can't shirk the reality that the schools and, and the need to provide schools is, is a crucial role of, of government, period, whether your school or county, or city, the resident on the ground doesn't really care, and we're not allowed to point fingers at each other. We all, we all are in it together. It is going to be their job to get it, to get that done, and we will support them however we can on that front. And yeah, maybe before I jump to other topics, I could, I could take any follow-up questions on the school comment if I, I didn't cover it correctly or thoroughly.
I am good. Are there any questions around schools from the commission? Thank you.
Just, I wanted to, Madam Chair, just keep going then a little bit while I've got the, the proverbial mic on the police and fire side of, of, of the conversation. Again, strong support from the city council and, and city staff. Budget support has never wavered for the police and fire departments. The, the fire department budget specifically has grown exponentially, appropriately so, over, over the last number of years. You know, we are really fortunate to have a paid-on call, what's we often call volunteer fire department, but they're a paid-on-call fire department with no full-time employees, and they are able to respond to and support our city of 27,000, which is a really impressive feat. Confident that they can handle these types of uses. We communicate with them. They are both a police chief and fire chief, are, are a part of our development review committee and our processes to review these types of proposals. Police chief specifically is at the table for all of these conversations. And as, as, again, was mentioned, the city council has kind of verbalized a support for at least one officer every year as housing density and population growth density continues on this same projection. It is hard to hire officers, but it's not impossible. We are not, not hiring them. I think the, the issue for transparency is, we maybe used to get 100 applicants, we now get 20. But we still get an officer, and, and we do not lower our standards. The pool is just narrowed, but the pool is, is out there. We are a highly supportive community of police. We are a good-paying community for our police officers, and so we do get applicants that want to come here, because I, I just would argue, you know, and we hear it from our officers, that they love the community support, the hellos at the, at the sandwich shops and the purchased coffee at the gas stations. You're likely not to get that in, in St. Paul or Minneapolis or some of the more challenging cities. And so that reflects back to them and makes them want to come here. They tell their friends that they went to college with to come to Rosemount because it's a supportive community, those types of things. So it does help us in recruiting, in recruiting officers, and we have a really strong culture in our department that folks want to be a part of. The forthcoming police building is a really big draw, as we talk to applicants as well, that they're going to get to operate out of a, a state-of-the-art public work, or a police and public works campus. So anyways, not to go down that rabbit hole, but we are confident that the public safety service provisions are, are going to remain very strong and continue to be the number-one ranked service in our community surveys year over year. Public safety is, public schools, probably number one. We don't survey that quite as much in our survey. Public safety is, is the number-one reason why people are proud to be in Rosemount, like to live in Rosemount, and we're certainly not going to change, change that. So, and then maybe quickly, I just wanted to give a, maybe a bit of a broader kind of explanation on maybe where, just from my chair, hearing the council's conversation, both in work sessions and at the city council meeting when the comp plan regiding happened for this parcel. I think Joe from, from Lennar would, would, would echo this, and his predecessors at Lennar for years and years would echo. Lennar has been coming to the city for 15 years or more, asking to put housing on this entire parcel. And we have said no to housing on this entire parcel. I've, I've been here since 2017. Predecessors before me have said no to housing on this parcel for over a decade. Because this parcel is seen as our, these, this quadrant, three sides, not including DCTC, is, is a prime quadrant in this, in the city. And so we've been protecting this land use for a very long time and telling Lennar not to bring housing projects to the city on this parcel for a very long time because of the need to protect it for the retail that we know the community wants. The city council is adamant, you've heard, you hear them say, "Plan or goal 1, 2, and 3 is retail," right? And so I, I can hear what the crowd would want to say, right, is, "Well, now you're giving up, right, and you're, and you've let them come in with this parcel." Understand that. I, I would, I would surmise to the, to the residents that, that are here or would listen in the future, this is a reflection of post-Amazon, post-COVID, deliver-at-home-in, in, in four hours or two days, market reality. So the notion of an entire corner being anchored by big-box or medium-box retail is a thing of Burnsville Mall days or, or Cedar and 42 days in Apple Valley, it doesn't exist any longer in the, in It doesn't exist any longer in the retail marketplace. What is the new normal in the retail marketplace is retail anchored by a density provider, which is exactly what we're doing here. So, I think from a staff perspective who study this stuff and do this for a living, we see this as an opportunity to bring to the community the type of retail, market-driven, density-anchored opportunity that is what is the new normal in, again, a post-Amazon reality. And so, again, I think that's, I just wanted to give that history and then kind of how that juxtaposes with Lifetime. Lifetime is very bullish on the site, but you also heard them say at a public meeting, if you watched when they spoke, "The site is still soft. The market for Lifetime to be here is still soft." They are coming because it's a great partnership that we've struck with Lifetime, but on a per-capita potential membership market, it does not check all the boxes that Lifetime needs. So, they are watching both of these proposals with very close focus and are also not certain that their entire side can handle being straight retail either. So, the notion, I just share that again, probably talking too much here, but I just, I feel the need that now is the time to kind of communicate this to the community of how kind of granularly we look at these things, that it's a different marketplace. I know that Akron is very busy, and we are very proud of what's happening on the east side of town, but I think you guys that live out there realize there is nothing past where development is right now. This parcel is not more than a couple blocks from a piece of property, as Anthony mentioned, that is going to stay vacant forever. It's going to be grass and solar panels owned by Flynn Hills forever. And so, you'll hear retailers talk about needing a 360-degree pole in a certain drive time. We will never achieve that northeast of here, very far, because it's going to be owned by Flynn Hills in perpetuity. Southeast of here, owned by DCTC in perpetuity. Further south, contamination. Further south, mining. So, the strength of the corner, while really strong, and the signal light makes it really strong, and Lifetime makes it really strong, and your folks' developments make it really strong, it still isn't nearly as strong as many retailers would want it to seem. So, again, overshare, talking too much, but just wanted to help answer some questions and maybe take some air out of the room a little bit. So, but anyways, yeah.
Thank you, Logan. Adam, I don't know if you want to address or if Anthony wants to address. There was the question on the notices for the public hearing on the regiding, and I don't know if we have data on that.
Madam Chair, we don't have anything specific on that action in front of us tonight, since that occurred several months ago. I mean, it's certainly something that we will always continue to look into to make sure that our public notification system is working as intended. I know some of the comments we heard from residents at the last meeting have already sparked some good internal discussion about not just the legal requirements that we have to provide public notice on certain types of development applications, but also some best practices that we can further employ to make sure that the residents are in the know and understanding development applications that are occurring near them. And, you know, kind of, I'll take Logan's word, you know, maybe to overshare a little bit there, but just because we have met our legal obligation to provide notice within X number of feet, we still hear from people say, "I didn't know about that." That doesn't change the reality that they didn't know about it, even though we met our legal requirements. Their reality is still very valid, and their perception is still very valid. So, other ways that we can do better to communicate that out, that's a bit marketing, that's a bit how we do public hearing notification processes, all things that we're continuing to review and try to make improvements on.
Thank you.
I would add to everyone listening or in the audience that you can sign up for email alerts, so you get a link to every city meeting that you would like sent to your email when they're put out. You know, we definitely want people to attend our public hearings, and I would say that the regiding, there was, there were residents, and they expressed a lot of the same concerns that the folks here tonight have expressed as well.
Thank you, Anthony. I think there's two more things that I have on my notes, and then I'll open up to commissioners for questions. The, there was a lot of comments around childcare, accessibility to childcare, which obviously is not something that we can control if people want to or are willing to open up childcare facilities, but that is something that would fit in the commercial areas of these areas, correct?
Right. Daycare centers are permitted within our commercial, C4 commercial zoning, as well as also in our business park zoning district. Additionally, home daycares are permitted use in our residential districts as well. You know, there's, there are conditional use in our public institutional. A lot of places of worship have a daycare in them as well. And I don't think a shortage of daycare centers or childcare is unique to Rosemount in any way.
And then, I have one more. Oh, Nick, can you kind of address some of the concerns around the pedestrian crossings and the safety with the roads? And I don't know if it's you or if it's the representative from Dakota County that can maybe speak to some of that?
Probably some of each, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you. Yes, and I know that, I've been here approximately a year, so I don't have the deep history on when everything came to be and went in and so forth. And in particular, what I'm kind of referring to by that is the flashing beacon crossing at Conomera and Abbey Field. I think that was roughly within the last two years. But, those sorts of improvements are made after taking into account what we're seeing for concentrations of pedestrian usage of these spaces. We want to make sure that there is a built-up demand, if you will, to use any particular crossing before we're enhancing it to that degree. And this, that situation was one of those that met that sort of criteria, and so that was put in there. It would be something that the city can consider elsewhere in town, and perhaps it's some of the evolution that is an outcome of after these projects go in. If there is a pent-up demand or an apparent demand to cross Abbey Field, perhaps that could be a candidate for something like that. We really have to see where people are focusing on their routing. I know there's going to be a couple of different ways to get to and from, say, Ellsbury Park or other locations in and through the area, so that's something we keep an eye on. Thanks for bringing forward the concern that it appears some motorists maybe aren't heating the warning or the signal there when folks have pressed the button and see the beacon going. It's certainly something we would share with our law enforcement, police department to maybe spend some additional time there and observe that and provide warnings or instruction or even ticketing if necessary for violations of that. That's the kind of feedback that we need, and so we would work with them to help step that up. There may be an opportunity as well to implement something along those lines on Akron Avenue, although I don't want to speak for Dakota County in terms of their process and how they would entertain such a concept. That's what, I know we have Erin Labrie in the audience here. She's the county engineer and could speak to that in more detail, but things of that nature, both perhaps a little bit further north on Akron or even at the Conomera intersection as part of an evolution of traffic control changes that might be instigated by the continuation of growth in the area, are things that the county and city collaborate on and work together on. And, for instance, in taking in a lot of these, well, these traffic analyses that have been presented by the developers for these projects, as well as others in this immediate area, city and county are going to embark on a little bit deeper dive on that as to what it means for more detail on what sort of implementations will come about at intersections and key points in this area, given now that we know that these types of projects are much more of a reality. You know, we have the comprehensive plan and some of the setups for roadway network have all come about based on projected land use and zoning, and that doesn't get quite to the heart of the details of what exactly those projects will be and what exactly they will generate for trips to and from. Those are the types of details that we need to be able to give a much more robust projection and forecast and warrant analysis, if you will, to determine what types of solutions and when in time it is justifiable to implement them. So, I think I'll stop there on that, and if I could invite Erin to the podium, maybe to speak on the Akron Avenue component of all this, if she would.
Thank you, Nick.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Erin Labrie. I'm the county engineer with Dakota County at 14955 Galaxy Avenue in Apple Valley. So, yes, this county and city have been working closely together as these developments have come forward to the city. We've been reviewing the traffic studies, looking at what impacts there are to the county system. There is sufficient capacity currently on Akron at Conomera to handle the traffic generation that is being planned with the developments that are being considered right now. But, as development continues to grow, we will continue to work with the city, looking at those traffic impacts, and at some point, maybe a traffic control, such as a roundabout or a signal, would become warranted at Conomera. And so, once we reach that point, that is something that we can program. We can program an improvement project for that. And so, as these developments come to fruition and are built, and we have destinations for both vehicles and pedestrians and bicycles, looking at the needs on the system as well as what type of pedestrian crossings may be needed, those are things that will work with the city as well as the developers, looking at that in the traffic study. So, we're working in concert. This is on our radar. As we know, there's a lot of development happening in the city, and we'll work to monitor it and to make plans when improvements are warranted.
When you, if you could speak just a little bit from the pedestrian side, you mentioned that you're monitoring the development, and so does that mean you're, that as the development goes in, you're looking actively at the pedestrian crossings? Or are you waiting, do we wait until we have more movement and we've got more people going that you look at it? Like, I'm just trying to guess, like, when Lifetime gets built or when we have the commercial and the apartments go in, do we have to wait for those pedestrian crossings for a while? Or is that something that you're able to put in sometime shortly after the development is built?
Yeah, I mean, those types of improvements have a short timeframe as far as design to implementation, so when they are warranted, that is something that we can work with the city on and move relatively quickly on. So, once the demand is there and we determine what the appropriate treatment might be and where it might be located, that is something we could definitely work on.
And is the demand based on population and when the population gets built, when the apartments get built in this case?
Yep. I mean, it's looking at the destination, it's looking at the traffic on Akron, how difficult it is to cross. Really, it's about destinations and where people want to go and walk to and bike to and how, what safety improvements might be needed.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions from the Commission for Erin around traffic? It's always a topic. It's always a hot topic at our meetings.
Thank you.
With our projects. Thank you. I think I, Anthony, I think I covered everything that, the notes that I took. Are there any questions from the Commissioners, or do the Commissioners make any notes from the public hearing that I missed? Commissioner Reed.
There was at least, I think, one question that came up, was around the buffer. And so, the adjacent, I can't remember the name of the street there, but the adjacent area across the street where there's, we call the buffer, are there any opportunities there for landscaping or doing anything to create more natural buffer between the residential and the high-density?
Commissioner Reed, are you talking about on the west side of Abbey Field, on the side closer to the homes?
Yes, yes.
Well, I think, you know, there may be an opportunity. I know the pipelines do have some concerns about fill and things like that, certainly on residential properties within their easements. Certainly, it's something that might be considered. I know it's kind of hit or miss whether the residents actually want it and if the pipeline would allow it. It's not something that we necessarily could require as a condition of approval, as it's not owned by the applicant. But, you know, boulevard trees and things like that are required for all high-density residential developments. The west side of Abbey Field does have boulevard trees currently. I think, you know, there's other parts similar to what you see along 42 as buffering there, but typically, those buffers are for traffic, noise, things like that versus residential use.
Can you put the landscape plan up, maybe just, I'm thinking to see the buffer that is there would be helpful.
So, this specific area is the pipeline easement, so there isn't an ability to plant trees over that. But, this area here, there's the boulevard trees placed, as well as some interior between the boulevard trees in the building, and you can see they're staggered to provide a little bit more coverage between those two. So, that's what the landscape plan shows there, and as I noted earlier, the additional trees placed around the pool area as well.
So, it looks like there's an easement on the west side of Abbey Field, though, too, that would limit any additional trees by the residents who live there?
Right, right. It kind of shifts from the northeast and then crosses the road and then goes to the other side of Abbey Field.
But, we do have a fair, it does appear that there's a fair amount of buffering and landscaping that the developer's going to do against the building, with the exception of that one area where the pipeline easement goes.
Correct, Madam Chair. And the scale of the parking on the site really pushes those trees to the edges, which kind of helps add that visual screening and buffering.
You know, when we look at this landscape plan, Anthony, I mean, and this view, it looks, oh, it looks like it almost screens it completely, but in practice, what is the expectation? I recall the height of these trees or width of these trees. Are these going to be short conifers? Are these going to be tall trees? Do you recall?
Right. So, the coniferous trees, they're a minimum of six feet in height, and those are kind of the more spiky circles here. The deciduous trees along the boulevards, those have the minimum planting size of two and a half inches for their caliper inches for their base. That's the city code requirement for landscape planning. In discussions with other landscape architects, planting a larger tree doesn't necessarily mean you get a bigger tree faster. It's just the smaller trees catch up to the, to a bigger tree that's planted. And so, you know, the, we really are just reviewing it against the code requirements for trees planted. But, the minimums are six feet for coniferous trees and two and a half caliper inches for deciduous trees.
And you might have said this, and I messed up, a two and a half inches equates to roughly...
No, I mean, I think if you go out to our newer developments, it's any of the new trees that you see in a brand-new house, you know.
So, they're going to be six to eight feet as well?
Yeah, I guess.
I mean, that's what you're saying, like, roughly something in that neighborhood.
Madam Chair, maybe I can just add on to that, too, and that's a question that often comes up as well. Why can't we plant much larger trees to help screen immediately? And in discussions with, again, landscape architects, you know, the viability of the tree surviving, that type of a transplant, when it's already that mature, is very low. So, that's why the city code is set at that two and a half caliper inches where it is. I've seen other cities where those caliper inches are actually smaller. So, it feels like this, the way the code is written here is to maximize the viability of those trees surviving, being planted there, while also trying to get the largest type of tree at the time of development.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the Commission at this time?
I just have a question on the building itself. I don't know if it's for you, Anthony, or the applicant there. So, where are the mechanical units in, on-site? Is it on the roof or is it somewhere else on-site?
So, the city code requires mechanical units to be placed so that they're not visible from the ground. Typically, they're placed behind the parapet walls and things like that. I couldn't tell you exactly where they are. Our planner, Julia, did the review of this one, more in-depth like that. But, typically, that's the requirement that when we get the building permits, we look for to make sure we know where the, where those units are going.
Okay.
And I would expect them to be on the roof.
Okay. So, the reason I ask is I'm seeing the heavier, I guess, the parapet wall and the wall cap that's being... that's being heavier in certain areas, and it possibly has to do with maybe screening, it's part screening. But, you know, as a way of making the building look less massive and less imposing, maybe it's, I was going to ask if there's a way to try to bring it down a little bit, maybe in terms of color, or just the entire size of the element, if that was more of a question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Andy, do you want to come up and address that question, or someone from your staff? We've got a question on the mechanical units, and then as well as some of the components of the building that are deeper, that are more massed, if there's...
Apologies, we didn't hear the question too well, so we might need to clarify.
Petromegids Coswellson Architects, 1301 American Boulevard, Bloomington.
Thank you.
Could you, apologies, could you repeat your mechanical question again?
Sure. My question was if your mechanical systems are located on the rooftop.
So for the corridor air, yes, it is. And then for the individual units, they're actually magic packs, and they're turned on the side of the bays. And then the grills are color-matched to the materials.
Sure. So, and the reason I ask is I just see in certain areas the heavier parapet wall cap or the corners, or...
In terms of the darker material at the top?
The darker material. It, I understand it's part of your, how you're trying to articulate the building, but it's also making the building look more massive from the single-family home side.
Yep, we can explore other colors.
Is that something that you can lighten up?
Yeah, we can explore other colors, of course.
That was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You might, you might want to stay up, there are more questions for you, just stay on hand.
Yeah. There are a couple other questions. One about the pool screening, a little more specifics about that.
Yeah, and sorry, I wasn't trying to use buzzwords. I hear you from the engineering perspective. So by code, it's a six-foot metal fence. And then, let's see, I'm not gonna be able to find the landscape plan. Oh, here it is. So we have our varieties that fully screen it. And from a resident and use perspective, people don't like it, especially how close we are to the road. They don't want to feel visible around a pool. So it is, we do our best to fully screen. We don't want anyone to be able to see our residents when they're at the pool.
Andy, what are your typical hours for pools at your facilities?
Generally, it depends on the municipality, but we typically would, for sure, I mean, sunset, you can't use the pool after that. And then if there are issues with anything, we set specific hours. And you can even limit the usage and have a sign-up system if it becomes a popular pool. Most of the time in the suburbs, the pools aren't used as too much, and people just lounge around them.
There was, thank you, there was another question about security, because we had...
And I apologize, I couldn't hear Schaefer Richardson's presentation, but we obviously value security. So during construction, the site's fully monitored 24/7 by active individuals. And then during operations, it's fully secured, so no one can get into the building. During business hours, we have onsite management that buzzes people in, otherwise it's up to residents. But we have smart lock systems, security cameras throughout the building, monitoring, you know, secure access everywhere. So the typical security. Oh, yeah, we do, from a resident screening perspective, also do background checks and everything that's permitted by Fair Housing, so.
Are there other questions for the applicant from Commissioners at this time? Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions from the Commission for staff?
I guess I do. You know, one of the, I think we've covered most of my concerns. But, and I'll just be upfront, say, I mean, I haven't been concerned as much about the high density. I think that was part of the vision. But, you know, the way the building is designed is still, it doesn't seem to fit into the vision we had. And I understand the vision is not a specification, so we can't expect it, you know, a developer to necessarily match what we envisioned. But I guess a couple of the curious questions here. When I asked the question of the developer about other layouts, the impression I got was that there really wasn't anything else we could do here, like having two buildings like we have in the vision. Or are there other opportunities to break this up a little bit and make it fit better as a transition vision met, and kind of being a more welcoming kind of layout? You have any thoughts on that, Anthony?
You know, I can't really speak to, like, the decision-making process on what makes a feasible project, and if they could have had two buildings versus one. Conventional wisdom is that one building is a little bit more efficient from an energy standpoint and construction standpoint. You know, the applicant is meeting all the requirements of the city code, which, as you can see on the site plan, requires a lot of parking. But we did hear, the planning question does, did receive a bunch of, a lot of comments that the neighborhood would really prefer a two-stall-per-unit parking provision. So, you know, I think there's a lot of city code issues, and certainly when the visioning exercise went through, they weren't doing it from a, let's review the city code and see what would work here, in the way a true developer would do. So I can't really speak to their decision-making process, but I do know that the first, some of the initial conversations were to provide that stepped-down side, so it is a little lower in height on the side that's closest to the residential area when we initially saw kind of the layout being proposed.
I echo your thoughts on the, I liked the design where we had the two buildings, but I think as I look at this, I feel like with the parking, if we did two buildings, you know, that, in some ways, that could push the parking more towards a more visible. I like that the parking is more on the interior, closer to what's gonna be future commercial. And when you're driving down Cona Mera and you're driving up Abbey Field, that that parking is a little bit more screened. I also feel that that screens some of that parking noise of the shutting of doors. The building gives a little bit of that buffer from that parking lot for the residents, so that kind of played a role. What I was looking at, just from a personal perspective, I was looking at, how could we do two buildings and still shield some of those things? I do echo Commissioner Turegardin's thoughts on the colors. I think some of the elevations, I felt, looked really good with architectural elements on them, but the one that's got a lot of heavy on the black, I think, looks really, makes it look really heavy. And so, I hear what you're saying there, and I almost would encourage maybe, you know, should this move forward and proceed, encourage the applicant maybe to look at some of the, it'd be nice to have it, have some cohesive with Lifetime and both apartment buildings, like, just make it, like, we have colors that all look together, like, work together. And so, maybe there's something that we can do there to bring it all together, to look, we can start developing an area that looks like it was all developed together, almost. And then maybe we can look to bring these same, the color elements here into the commercial that, as Liddar works with future commercial tenants, kind of have similar look and feel as well. So that's kind of my, that was kind of my thoughts on the, I struggled with the multiple building, too, piece of it, but I feel like the jog in it and the setbacks, they do help. It's not just a straight building. So I feel like that kind of helps a little bit there, just to share a different perspective.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission?
I have some comments, but no questions.
Okay, go ahead. We can start comments.
Well, first of all, I did venture out, like I said, to the property. My husband and I biked out there. I've drove past it a couple times, because I think as a planning commissioner, it's my due diligence to look and see what the residents are coming and talking and taking their time to get educated and research, which I'm hearing tonight. So I believe it's my due diligence to go in and actually check it out physically myself, to see what you folks are talking about. And I just, I kind of stood there, and I can't, in good faith, vision a four-story apartment building in the middle of, it's all residential. And it doesn't flow properly if I was an architect or a planning at, for my career choice. And I'm not. So I'm just seeing that it just doesn't seem to fit there. It's a beautiful building, by the way. Architect, design, the people that are promoting the building itself, it's beautiful. It just, to me, doesn't fit there. And all of the land that we have here and opportunity, I think one person mentioned it quite nicely, is, you know, once we build that, it's gone. And Rosemont, I've lived here 13 years. I lived in Eagan, I don't expect us to be in Eagan, but I have waited, and I know a lot of people in this community have waited, for a lot more chance to have economic development and commercial and opportunity and shopping and things to do, and whatever they want to do, gathering spaces. And I just feel that if we give this up to another apartment building, which we have approved two very large ones tonight, and also, you know, there's housing across the street that's high-density that's gonna go in as well, I just think that we're gonna miss an opportunity here. So I, I will not be voting for it to be zoned from C4 to R4 tonight.
Are there other comments? Yeah, Mr. Powell.
Madam Chair, I think the input we've received from staff tonight has really highlighted the need for the additional residential, given the constraints, flood trials, resources, DCTC, contamination, Dakota aggregate being mined till, what, 2040, on the need for additional residential in order to support that commercial that we want so badly to come to this area. And that, together with the fact that it's been reguided for high-density and that they're meeting the city's zoning requirements, and, you know, leads me to vote in favor of rezoning.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I, my comment is that growth is rarely linear. It's never a straight path. And, you know, in understanding and listening to what Nick had to say and what Logan had to say about how we manage growth as a city, it gives me confidence that as we continue to grow, as we continue to get more dense, there are ways in which, as issues come up, that we have the capability to resolve it, to address it for the residents, to make it a better place. So with that said, I understand that this, the building is longer linear because it's a factor of where the easement is and the shape of that property that's being developed. So it's a little bit of both, and also trying to make sense of the economics of the development. So I understand that with that in mind, the applicant has also reduced the height of the building, stepped it down in the ends. So they've tried to work with us, and they're also looking for ways to change some of the elements, architectural elements, to have it blend better with the surroundings. So with that said, I'm in favor of the settlement.
Thank you. Commissioner Turegardin?
Just to say that I appreciate the work of the developer to take in the input from the last meeting to make changes, and appreciate all the context that's provided by staff tonight and the information that's been shared. I feel like there's a lot of development, residential development, happening around this property with the Schaefer Richardson development that we approved tonight, and the Amberfields development that's going in south of 42. I feel like that is a lot of residents that are moving into that area with no commercial at all planned, other than the Lifetime Fitness. So for that reason, I'm not in favor of changing the zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chris Rivera. I will echo some of the comments that have been made. I do appreciate the developers' updates that they went back and updated the plan, and adding a pickleball court for the residents that live there, making updates to the landscaping and the adjustments on the height, also their willingness to look at the architectural elements here. I do feel similar to Commissioner Turegardin that growth is not linear. I think you said it very well, very eloquently. Growth is not linear. I believe that the city is poised to support the residents as we grow and work with the county and the school district and such in doing that. I do feel that this is close to what we envisioned. While it's not multiple buildings like we had visioned for this, the northern part of this commercial parcel, we did, when we did our visioning exercise, we had lengthy conversations about how we needed to continue to grow the residential areas in order to support the, bringing the commercial to this area. And there is still, I feel, a lot of commercial, even with this parcel as residential, which is, for the most part, it's a little bit larger than what we envisioned, but we did envision putting residential up in this northern section of this parcel. I feel like we still do have a lot of commercial just south of the parcel. We've got some commercial south of 42. We have commercial east of here, east of Akron with the Lifetime area. And then we also have commercial just a little bit further west at 145th and 42. And then there's, there are some commercials still a little bit further west at 3 and 42. So I feel like in this strip and zone, we still do have a lot of commercial to provide the residents with commercial amenities on the other side of Highway 3. And I feel like continuing, as we continue to add some of the residential multifamily housing, it's going to help further spur that development. So I do feel that this, this plan is aligned with, for the most part, with our vision, and the zoning request does align with our comp plan, which has been approved, to have this zoned as multifamily residential. So with that, I will be voting in favor of this this evening.
Yeah, I think I already, I always said, I'm in favor of the high-density, but just to kind of close out and add, and echoing the comments we've heard here. I mean, I live just a little bit further west on Cona Mera, closer to Meadows Park, and so, I share some of the same concerns about the traffic in Cona Mera and so on. But I think I feel comfortable with the way the city has done their analysis, answered questions about the infrastructure. And Logan, I appreciate, I think, the perspective on, you know, from the Port Authority and some of the growth, it really does seem to have a lot of logic behind it and why we're doing this. So I am in favor as well.
Thank you. So this evening, we do have a couple motions before us.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make the first motion, recommend the City Council approve a zoning map amendment to rezone the site from C4 PUD, community commercial plan unit development to R4, high-density residential, subject to the Metropolitan Council approval of the Conference of Land Use Plan, change of the site from community commercial to high-density residential.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Reed. Jesse, I'm gonna ask you to take roll. Roll by roll. Powell?
Aye.
Rivera?
Nay.
Keninker?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Eber?
Nay.
Turegardin?
Aye.
Motion carries for two. Sorry, counting lesson for me.
I'll make a motion to recommend City Council approve the preliminary and final plats for the Roers Apartment Project, subject to conditions A through G.
Second.
And before we move forward with that one, I just want to ask, Anthony, both Commissioner Turegardin and I echoed some interest in having them look at the colors and the architectural elements. Do we need to add that as a condition?
So, those sorts of things aren't required by the code, and so it's not recommended to add conditions that go above and beyond the code. But certainly, those recommendations will be brought forward to the City Council. The City Council members do watch all of the meetings, the Planning Commission meetings, and get a copy of the minutes and a summary.
Okay. And it's something that you can pass on to Julia and maybe work with the applicant on for City Council meeting. Oh, thank you. I apologize, I just wanted to confirm that before we move forward.
First procedural question. Have we voted nay to the first motion? Do we, do we vote for motions two and three?
You will need to vote yes. Yes, you, yes, you should vote. I don't know, I would, I'll turn to our attorney. If they voted no on the first one, they, voting yes on the second one kind of seems contradictory.
Actually, I would, I would say the reverse. Now that the motion has passed, you should vote with that in mind. Would you approve the plat in light of the fact that the, consider it to have been done? It's now been rezoned. What do you think of the plat?
Thank you. With that, we have a motion in front of us that I believe was made by Commissioner Reed and seconded by Commissioner Powell. Am I have that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Jesse, will you take roll again?
Yes. Rivera.
Nay.
Kenninger.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Abair.
Aye.
Turgarden.
Aye.
Powell.
Aye.
Rivera. I'm sorry, I already said Rivera.
I did that already. I did that about twice. I did that about twice. Motion passes five-one. And then our last one this evening, I will make a motion to recommend city council approve the site plan review for the proposed multifamily community, subject to conditions A through D as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger and seconded by Commissioner Reed. Jesse, please take roll.
Kenninger.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Abair.
Aye.
Turgarden.
Aye.
Powell.
Aye.
Rivera.
Nay.
Motion passes five-one. This item will proceed forward to the city council meeting on November 15. As the applicant exits the room, thank you for your work on this. Thank you for the updates to the plan, and we appreciate you taking a look at the architectural elements and colors. Thank you. We'll give just a minute before we proceed with the next item on our agenda this evening for those that are clearing out to do so.
Madam Chair, what is the next item?
The next, the next item is Hawkins.
Okay.
It's as if you have a lot going on, Anthony.
The next item on our public hearing agenda this evening is a request by Hawkins, Inc. for approval of a site plan review related to the construction of two additions onto the existing manufacturing and warehouse building on-site. And Anthony, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a site plan review due to the fact that the two additions total 47,000 square feet, which is above the threshold of 50% of the building area, that would trigger the site plan review process. A PUD was approved in 2011 for the construction of the existing building. At that time, the two proposed additions were planned as future additions and shown on the site plans, although a condition of approval at the time was that those additions would be required to go through the site plan review process for the reasons I just highlighted. The Hawkins facility is located in the eastern portion of the city, just south of Courthouse Boulevard and east of Highway 52, out near the Flint Hills refinery. To the south is the Flint Hills ATS terminal and then some additional industrial uses in the surrounding parcels. The site area is 27.86 acres in size. It's zoned heavy industrial, and the existing building is just over 63,000 square feet. It contains a mixture of manufacturing space and warehousing. And then additionally, the center of the property does contain a small take farm. The proposed additions would be on the, I guess, northwest side of the building and the northeast side of the building. Just to go through some of the parking requirements, there is a shortage of two stalls due to the size of the area. Staff is recommending approval with the condition that the applicant identify an area for two stalls to be shown as a proof of parking. The mix of uses does allow for a different calculation for the required parking. When the original approval went through, there was an excess of 22 stalls required. With the addition, a total of 24 more stalls are required based on the size of the building and the uses within, resulting in that two parking stall increase required. Staff is recommending that as a proof of parking due to the fact that the applicant does not necessarily anticipate an increase in need of their existing parking. Utilities into the site are shown on the utility plan. There isn't a whole lot to say as the site is already developed. You can see that there's some pipes coming in from the north as well as stormwater in the southern portion of the site. Here's a floor plan of the existing building, these two additions, these two warehouse additions in the north and west sides here. On the south, these kind of angled areas are for truck loading zones. So this is just a close-in on the northern addition, just an open warehouse space as well as the western addition. Here are some elevations showing the proposed additions. This north addition does include some aggregate concrete vertical treatments to break up that wall. That was a condition of the original approval and is being carried through on this addition along that same elevation. Otherwise, it's concrete tip-up panels that are consistent with the building as it currently exists on the site. So staff is making a recommendation to approve the site plan and building design review to allow the construction of the two additions, subject to the conditions, one of which being the applicant work with staff to identify a spot for two additional stalls as a proof of parking.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Okay. This item is a public hearing item this evening, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this item may do so at this time, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from the commission on this item?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan and building design review for Hawkins, Inc., to allow the construction of two additions, totaling 47,000 square feet, onto the existing manufacturing and warehouse building on-site, subject to the three conditions identified in the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Rivera. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This item will move forward to city council on November 15. And I think I said that with the last item as well, but that item also is moving forward tentatively to city council on November 15. And the last item on our public hearing agenda this evening is a request by McGow Development for preliminary and final plat approval related to a future development at South Robert Trail and 160th. Anthony, it's yours again.
Shocker, huh? Okay, so this is a request by a developer of the site that's north and east of the intersection of Highway 3 and County Road 46 for preliminary and final plats to create a parcel that would be used in anticipation of future development on the site. The applicant does plan to construct an office warehouse building, either multi-tenant or single-tenant. The proposed plat does meet the dimensional standards for parcels in the Business Park zoning district. This is located, as I said, north and east of 160th and South Robert Trail. As the commission may recall, following a small area study, this area was reguided and rezoned to Business Park development. Subsequently, the parcel on the west side of South Robert Trail was platted and received approval to construct manufacturing facility with some outdoor storage on there. That approval included rezone to light industrial to accommodate that outdoor storage. The applicant is, again, proposing to plat the site in anticipation of future development. Just a reminder, as I just spoke, the zoning of the site is Business Park, and then the land use is Business Park as well. The proposed plat is shown here. On the right is Highway, or County Road 46, and then South Robert Trail is on the west of the site on the bottom of the screen. On the north, you can see the ghost of the platted extension of Boulder Trail that will be connecting with Highway 3. Access onto the site when it develops will be across an outlot that was reserved from that development of the Home Depot site and will be ultimately allowed for private driveways. So the recommendation is simply to recommend the city council approve the preliminary and final plats of the Rosemont Industrial Edition, subject to conditions one and five in the staff report. I can take any questions the commission may have at this time.
Are there any questions from the commission?
Anthony, you say access would be off of?
The extension of Boulder, correct. There will be one additional access in the southeast corner due to the fact that there is an existing access down there, but primarily the access will be from the north.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? This item is a public hearing item this evening, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item may do so at this time. Coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger and seconded by Commissioner Abair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Any, well, I have just one comment. I'm kind of excited that we're seeing this area start to develop and get some plating going, getting some movement with, we have the Home Depot warehouse building and some other activity out there, so it's exciting. So thank you to those that are bringing these projects forward for that area. Any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approve the preliminary and final Rosemont Industrial Edition plats, subject to the five conditions identified in the staff memo.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Abair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This item passes and will move forward to the city council meeting with our recommendation for the November 15 meeting tentatively. Anything always subject to change. That concludes our public hearing section this evening. Is there any new business this evening?
No new, no new business, Madam Chair, other than just a couple of comments from staff when you're ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, again, thank you to the planning commission. I mean, there's a lot of detail, a lot of very intense information in front of you this evening. And I know, Madam Chair, you addressed it just in your comment now, but to certainly highlight the two large industrial and manufacturing expansions happening as a part of this agenda. I was at an event with the mayor this morning, and he made sure to highlight that, along with many others that are occurring across the community. These are projects that bring both jobs, tax base, as well as other benefits to the community. Kind of gets buried on the agenda tonight, but these are very big projects, significant projects, we should certainly be proud of to see come forward.
Thank you. I will just take this moment also to thank the city staff that was here tonight. If you can also pass along our thanks to the representative from Dakota County that came, Dan from Park and Rec who was here as well, and also our city attorney. We thank you for being here this evening and for addressing public concerns and the questions that we had from the last meeting. So thank you for all the time and work that went into that. And also, from the planning perspective, Adam, Anthony, and passing on to Julie as well, thank you for your time with those items that we continued from the last meeting. And I know that was a lot of work to pull it all together. We appreciate the additional detail and information. I will also just do a reminder, our next meeting is November 22nd, falls in line with the Fourth Tuesday and the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. The December meeting, just a reminder, that is December 19th. It is not a normal Tuesday meeting due to the holidays. And then I believe our first January meeting will be January 23rd, which would follow our normal Fourth Tuesday schedule. And Adam, can we, maybe we can work on a calendar for the next November meeting to?
Yep, so then we can.
Have that on the agenda.
Yep, so that gets on everybody's schedule, so it would be January 24th would be the Fourth Tuesday of January in 2023. I don't want to think, I don't want to think too far ahead yet, but no, we'll certainly be able to provide a calendar at your next meeting about what.
Thank you.
You said December 19th.
December 19th. I have that right, right?
I believe so from our previous discussion. I don't have that in front of me.
That's the, that's the date I gave last month, so I'm pretty sure, because it's a Monday. Yep, so it would be December 19th.
And we'll certainly send out that information to the planning commissioners based on the previous scheduling decisions.
Awesome. Thank you for catching my incorrect 2023 date. Let's not move a whole year ahead. Too fast. Okay, with that, I will adjourn the public, or the planning commission meeting for this evening. Meeting adjourned.